610A, consideration of request to waive the competitive bidding process. 2 for data management software pursuant to Lake County Code, Chapter 2, Section 38.4. And B, consideration of proposed agreement between the County of Lake and OpenGov for electronic permitting software and services for the Community Development Department. And we have Director Turner.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Department. I know I've been back for a little over a year right now, but this is my absolute, hands down, most favorite item to bring to you that since I've returned. You have before you today an agreement with, between the county and OpenGov for an electronic permitting software and services. So I am going to hand it over to Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker-Smith for details, but can just let you know that our department is eagerly anticipating all of the many, many systemic improvements that await us with this new system. And as Acela, as we are in that, almost in the middle of our three-year agreement with Acela, the timing for this dovetails just perfectly because we'll still be using the current system while building the next system. I will turn it over to Shannon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So you have before you a three, four, three and a half year contract with OpenGov. It is a company that we have been vetting now long before I came to Community Development. Staff has been working over the last couple of years looking for an alternative to Acela. You have the documents for the piggyback exemption as part of our purchasing policy. And so hopefully, all of those documents are in order and you've had a chance to review them. But we intend to move forward with this contract. Not only is it going to give us a public-facing portal for the community to be able to start their permitting applications and land use applications, we're also going to be able to use it as a data tracking system for all three divisions. Building is the only division currently very successfully using the Acela product that we've been committed to. So we're very excited to get a data management software up and running for both code enforcement and planning. It's going to dovetail with our data ticket contract and make it much more efficient for us to process notices of violation for code enforcement and just so many of the processes. It's also going to, we're going to do a major data migration from a lot of past databases. And so we're hoping that will also result in a single source of truth for our department where we will, all staff will have access to all the information that exists historically on parcels and APNs and property addresses. So we're very excited for that piece as well. And we also think it's going to make us tremendously efficient in responding to the public, both at the counter and to PRA requests with all of our data being in one location. Yeah, it's going to the public-facing portal. We'll also have the ability to process credit card payments. We worked diligently with Patrick and Genevieve from the Auditor's Office to ensure that we're all on the same page, that we have, are going to work through an appropriate timeline for their departments, for their part of those processes that they need to take on. And so we've had a lot of conversations about that. And we also have two representatives from OpenGov on Zoom who just wanted to share a couple of slides and be available to answer any of your questions as well. So we are going to have Greg and Brant join us now for just a short presentation.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today and for the opportunity to work with the county. Shannon and Mariaa and everyone else that we worked with have been amazing to work with over the last, you know, year-plus. So just really excited for this opportunity. I just wanted to share a couple of slides to introduce you to OpenGov. I know a lot of you have heard of us before, but let me start sharing my screen really quickly. All right. And so in case you have heard of us, maybe heard of us in a different area of what we do, I always like to start off with kind of the big picture of OpenGov. We do work with over 1,800 agencies across the nation, across these five core applications, budgeting, procurement, financials, asset management, permitting. Permitting is the one that we're going to be working on with you all, and that is up for consideration, really, when we consider our permitting and licensing suite. There are four key areas that we focus in on. Shannon just mentioned that there is a public portal so that your community members are going to be able to access all the different types of building, planning, and code applications and workflows that they might need to engage on when they click submit, if there are fees to be paid. It all gets routed to the appropriate workflow and streamlining the review process, which is a really labor-intensive part of the processing for county staff. There's ability to have in-app collaboration so that if I'm a resident waiting on a building permit, I can see where I'm at any, at any point. If I'm the reviewer, the inspector, I can communicate with that applicant and really gives you the full control for staff to really own the platform and design it for the various specific needs that the county has. And last thing to say is our permitting and licensing suite is designed to be expanded upon. So what we are working with you on originally, or in the beginning, is going to be building, planning, and code. But a lot of these other use cases are on the table as well, and it's something that we're really excited about, and it's really a partnership that we see growing for many years to come. So just wanted to share those slides and happy to answer any questions.
I did forget to mention in my presentation that both the City of Lakeport and the City of Clearlake are using OpenGov. We were able to go and visit with the City of Lakeport. We saw what it's like on their backend to manage the applications, to create new applications, to, and their staff is managing all that in-house. You know, with Acela, we currently have an in-house person, plus we have to have a contract with another company that, to help us manage it. So we're feeling very comfortable that this is a product that we'll be able to interface with very easily on the backend and really make it very custom for what we, what we want and need. And the benefit of a public-facing portal that's cross-jurisdictional is that the public will be able to create one login that would work across the platform for whatever jurisdiction they happen to be applying for some kind of a permit or making a complaint. So it'll become something that our public, our residents in Lake County will become very familiar with, regardless of which jurisdiction they happen to be interacting with at that time.
Yay. All right. I know we had a long conversation about this over a year ago, but excited to be moving forward. Do we have any comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Appreciate the work that's gone into bringing this to our attention. I know I've met with OpenGov on multiple subjects as well. Definitely seen the program in action over at the City of Clearlake, both on the front end as well as the backend. I, I'll just at least speak to the history of this. Where we are is not good. How we got here is not good. I want to make sure that we, we move forward in the correct way. Because we acquired Acela, I don't even know the specific date, but I'm going to say 2016, then actually really put it fully into practice until way later. And even then, it's only being partially used. We increased the number of licenses, made it three years. I wish we had been a little bit more cautious in our progress of wanting to utilize a program that we were not yet able to wrap our arms around. So here, I do see, obviously, there's some training. There's going to be the whole moving of data from one area to the new software. I see training, but I don't, and maybe it's just not something that I have access to, but I don't see, what is the expectations of the training? Because I've gone through these massive upgrades from one system to another. You go through a quick training and you're so new to what you just saw that you only kept maybe 10% to 20% of that information, and the other percent is the important part to make sure that you can send out bills and invoices and all those other things. Is there a set kind of checklist or expectation of what should be learned and realized through that training, just in case that we need to go back to OpenGov and say, hey, we're really struggling with this. Can we go through another training specifically for these items? Is that available? Is that within the cost that's being provided, or would that be at an extra cost? I just, I worry, changing systems is not a simple thing. Everybody does it, but at the same time, it's specific steps need to be taken.
It is going to be an enormous project for our department. And we do have built into the contract some, not just training, but onsite training where OpenGov will come out. There'll be both like a front-end training program where the, you know, the folks in our department who are utilizing the software mostly with customers will certainly go through an extensive training. But there will also be training for those of us who will be operating on the backend, and that will be a separate and additional training. I'll hand it over to Brant and Greg to talk about any, anything they'd like to add about training.
Yeah, for sure. I can, I can add, and Brant, let me know if you have anything to add as well. So we do have a specific section in our scope of work that calls out the various training deliverables. They're bucketed into three sections. There's an administrator and configuration training. There's an end-user training, and then there's the onsite training. I will say that there's going to be usually weekly or bi-weekly meetings over the course of this project where your staff, the key administrators, will get hands-on and own the workflow and development. Those are not counted as specific trainings. Those are going to be the hands-on work that happens as we work together to build out the workflows and applications. I believe that in this scope of work, we have extra training. I think they're specifically called out 42 hours of specific administrative training, eight hours of reporting training, six hours of end-user training, and two days of onsite training. So we hear you loud and clear, Supervisor. And I personally have been working with not just Mariaa, but Mariaa's predecessor and the predecessors before that, on this idea of, of kind of how to make sure that this project is successful. And so we made sure to put in a lot of buffer on specific training, and then the ongoing training is built into the price as well. So no additional money needed for more training.
Yep. Thank you for that. Next is the overall picture of where we are technologically here at the county with all of our software. There is work happening, not going to say through the TGC, the Technical Technology Group Committee, but it's kind of originating from there. There's an RFP out for a consultant for finding the next accounting software, obviously making sure things connect. I'm hoping that it's possible to continue the communication of your incorporation of this software to let the TGC know how things are running and how things are working. And that way, we can also, the TGC can keep you up-to-date as to where we are so we can figure out sooner than later how we're going to be able to blend whatever upcoming accounting software that we end up bringing in. Because there are going to be some definite connections we would love to see, rather than making it inefficient in that way. Unfortunately, we're not at a point that we can say, this is what we're using. Does this work? And with the situation you have, holding you back would actually be more harmful than good. The way that you're situated with the licenses that you're not necessarily using to the fullest potential and the inefficiencies. I know I can't go up to the third floor and say, I want to, can you give me a list of all the projects happening in District 2? That should be a click of a button, not a asking everybody all around you type of thing. And so it's very inefficient in understanding what is happening in that department from an outside perspective. So I'd love to remedy those things, so moving it forward. I know there's some questions, most likely about where I stand on the waiving of the bidding. I would love to see an RFP. At the same time, you're not going to find 20 companies that do this type of software. I know that you've done multiple demos with different companies and that you've come to this one. And again, the fact that we already have one that we've tried and is not working for us, have demoed others and seen, experienced in other county jurisdictions here in Lake County, I'm okay with the waiving of the bidding process. So that's where I stand, and I hope that that can be the direction from the board, is to continue that conversation with the TGC, just because blending those two softwares is going to be really important for efficiency purposes.
We are absolutely happy to give regular updates to the TGC. It may be that other departments then could, would find a use for some of the other modules that OpenGov offers. So yeah, we're more than happy to keep you updated.
Great. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Number one, excited to see this move forward, excited to see happy faces from CDD, but some concerns as well. I'm kind of concerned about the dispensing with an RFP in this, if only because whether it's Acela or OpenGov or some others, what they call a software as a service, these SaaS models are incredibly difficult to read and understand as far as the scope of services. So whether it's Acela or OpenGov, show me the modules, tell me what they do, show me the workflows, figure out what plugs in. And so I want, I definitely want to support this, but as far as some concerns like Supervisor Sabatier mentioned, it should be point and click, show me projects in a district and all that. My specific ask has been, show me active cannabis permits in the county. I don't care about the software platforms, just what can we do to do transparency? So, and I don't see a real, other than ongoing discomfort with Acela, which is like, okay, everyone stand up, but the cost breakdown, you know, what's the cost comparison between Acela and some modules we may not be fully utilizing? And, and this proposal, again, with some modules, they're going to take some training and mastery and, and absent some direction, specific direction to, for example, create a public-facing portal on the website that will export this. And another concern might be integration with government processes. So for example, if we're processing our use permits in OpenGov, but our granted permit people have to go dive back into Acela when they're dealing with the state, you know, is that a seamless transition? So I guess, you know, I definitely want to support this, but I can't compare and contrast. I can't really fully understand the discomfort with Acela. I don't know the, the relative budget amounts. So I don't know if we're going up, holding steady, seeing some cost savings. And I don't, I don't understand where the Acela modules might be either deficient or underutilized in some aspects, but these modules are superior. So whether it's the vendor or staff or some combination thereof, can you just maybe hit on a bullet point as far as public-facing data sets and what we can do to, to expand upon that? And this is the better mousetrap? I'd love to hear about that. And I'd also love to hear about the cost-effectiveness of where we're at now and what we're proposing here today.
I'm happy to start with the, let's build a better mousetrap part of your inquiry. Ever since, I think, the first Acela agreement was signed by Director Kowel, and then subsequent to, to the two next directors tried to get it implemented, but it, it was such a time-intensive task just on staff at that time, of which I was one, that it never really got implemented. Somehow, and I don't really understand how, the agreement was renewed regularly, every one year, three years, things like that. And, and before that, we would always have such frustration within the team, within the staff team, of how difficult and cumbersome it was to actually create the program that we needed, that it would, it would seem like we were, we were all leaning toward, or the department was leaning toward not renewing the contract. But systematically, like regularly, right before every contract, the Acela would reach out to the director and say, oh, well, it's just because this hasn't been clicked, or it's just because you didn't have that module. And the agreement would get renewed again. And that's what happened just this last time with our latest director before I got here. And what I'm looking forward to in this new better mousetrap is a more hands-on staff with OpenGov, more direct support. We have more experience regionally with our, with our colleagues in the cities who already also have experience with it and are thrilled with the product. It is less likely, I anticipate it is less likely that we're going to go to sleep with one system and wake up the next day with Acela and have a new bug, all of a sudden, new. Can't understand it. We can't figure it, it was working yesterday, but no, now it's not. And so that's why we have to have a full-time business services analyst on staff, is just to keep Acela afloat, let alone, I mean, just forget planning. You know, he was trying, he, he had a priority to, to create the planning module when I first got here, but we were so glitchy and irritatingly inefficient on the building permit side that I took planning off the table. We've just never been able to get planning up and running because his full-time job is fixing all the glitches to keep building up and running. Code enforcement, as Supervisor Sabatier, has, has put in so much time to try to assist us with our permitting and our records-keeping and all that stuff on the code enforcement side, because to do so in Acela was not reasonable. And, and so we still don't have much going on in code enforcement as well. So what I'm looking forward to in this new mousetrap is that is a program that has modules that we don't have to recreate the wheel. We, they are already familiar with our planning processes because we really don't do things all that differently, other than every other planning division in the state. We still have all the same processes, and so they are more familiar and willing to help, unlike Acela, which says, oh, well, we're not really going to assist you. Why don't you pay another company, TruePoint, to assist you to work our product? So not only have we had a full-time embedded staff person, we've also had a whole secondary agreement for a whole other company that's supposed to come in and help us with Acela. We, we don't anticipate that level of disconnection with OpenGov as we move forward. In all of, I have, part of my job was investigating this exact same electronic permitting system type of upgrade for the City of Ukiah while I was there. So I've kind of been working on this for two years, just going through so many different demos. And there are products out there that would put us right back where we were with Acela, the whole recreate the wheel, build it like an erector set, kind of, kind of cobble together a program. And it is more of a holistic system, the modules that are more intuitive and easier to, to wrap our head around so that we can tweak stuff that we need or create stuff that we want, the way we want it. With OpenGov, it's just like night and day. So this mousetrap is going to rock. This is going to be a great mousetrap. And we are, we are so excited to start this transition over, just something that's more intuitive and approachable to staff and to, to increase our efficiency in our services to the public.
And of these model, of these modules, can you speak to the transparency aspects of it? How can this help the public and, and grumpy supervisors keep track of what's going on in a public-facing way?
Yeah, there's, the portal allows the applicant for what, or complaint, you know, whatever they're accessing on the site to go back and check the status of wherever their application at. So the workflow is built into the product, and then we both are working as staff through the, the workflow on that backend, but the, but the user, the front-facing user also can see where their project is at in the workflow. So that will be quite helpful. There's also, you know, several types of permits that we might be able to move to a completely over-the-counter process where somebody might not ever even have to come in to the building department to get a permit to change their hot water heater or do some plumbing work. So we're trying as much as we can to move forward to more progressive systems. And to address a couple of your other questions about funding structure, so we're currently paying about $80,000 a year to Acela. We do have to finish that contract, but as Director Turner mentioned, it takes about a year to implement, and so we're in, we're in a good timeline. We're going to build out the modules for code enforcement first, planning second, leaving building on Acela because it's working relatively well for them. And they'll be the last of the three divisions to come over in a, in about a year's timeline. We're going to be paying about $100,000 a year, but again, we, we then also would not have to have the TruePoint contract, which we're paying on top of the $80,000 for Acela. And we'll be able to repurpose our business services analyst a little bit to help out with some other priorities in the department. So it's about a break even in terms of cost. And then just to talk a little bit about the RFP process, I just want to ensure the board that our, you know, we really have done our due diligence, even though we didn't take this product to RFP. This has been our entire management team over a couple, you know, at least a year's time vetting a bunch of different products and having a lot of conversations. Because, you know, when you go to RFP, all of these companies will provide a beautiful proposal for you, right? But what we have really done that I think is even almost stronger than an RFP process is we have talked to a lot of jurisdictions, and not just Lakeport and Clearlake, but Napa and a bunch of other jurisdictions that our chief building official is connected to and our code enforcement manager is connected to. So they've, we've done a lot of outreach.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. And when we've had these conversations before at the board level, I don't, we weren't presented with the, the recommendation to move towards OpenGov, and I think that's what's different today. And I really appreciate that, and I could see your enthusiasm. And it's exciting to move forward.
Probably our whole department is upstairs just hoping that this is going to get the go-ahead because everyone's very excited to have something that might work for us. And just as an example, you know, without code, you know, code enforcement being an example of not having a database, you know, we have some grant funds, $3 million in grant funds we're trying to manage. We've been keeping that data in binders because we don't have a sufficient data-tracking software to manage this data. So we're, I mean, it's going to make an incredible difference to, to what we can do up there.
And the Excel worksheet we get sent once a week. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. I think this is going to be very beneficial. I know we usually are concerned about the, the funding or the spending we're going to put on this, but I really, I know the amount of energy, time, and things left under the table that aren't getting done because of the lack of what Acela can do. Because Mariaa, you've been to my municipal advisory committees, answering the same question from month to month, giving an update that they've asked for, where this can provide that. Can this, one quick question, can this, does this give the opportunity for someone that's concerned about a project in their vicinity to look at the permitting process?
I do think that we will be able to give the supervisors all a login for the, for the portal, and you guys would be able to take a look and access information out of the system yourselves.
And that'll be good, but what I mean is like a community that's living in the area.
And I'll let Greg shake his head if I'm wrong, or Brant, but I think that we are also going to hook up to our GIS system so someone can say, I have a concern with what's going on over there, and they can go click on it and see if there are any permits in process.
Right.
So it actually will help save us time because they won't be reaching out to you, who then has to reach out to us, or they won't be reaching out to us, who then has to look it up. All that information will be right there.
And I'll be glad for them to reach out to me so I can show them how to use this and then go forward from there. This, this gives me something, rather than trying to set another meeting and talking about it and then going to the next meeting and seeing there either is or what, or, you know, this didn't happen, that didn't happen, so now let's set another meeting, taking you away from another, one of your many responsibilities as well. So, so that's where I see this, is it's, it's going to minimize some of the gains and drains, especially when it comes to FOIAs. This, this will give people the opportunity to ask for documents and get them without having to go through a process and, you know, put you guys in a position to have to...
We haven't talked about that aspect of it yet, so I'm not sure how that will integrate or if it will integrate into this process, because we do have a staff person who is our central kind of gatekeeper of public record act requests, complaints, things like that, to make sure we're not dropping the ball. Where I see this as being beneficial is, is on the public side, instead of them fretting for days before because they don't want to contact us or they're worried or something, they can just click on the computer and find it out right there in real time. And so it will probably save a lot of frustration for members of the public as well.
All right. Yeah, I think this is good. It'll streamline some things, and I think it's a good move in the right direction.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just as a comment to my colleague Supervisor Green, for this specific topic, I feel like we're bleeding right now. We've got to stop the bleeding. This isn't, this is a very imperfect way of maybe going about it, but at the same time, something has to be done to change the fact that this is how we've been for far too long, and we got to make that change. I do have one last question, and that's the reporting part. I do have one last question, and that's the reporting part. Does the system provide, I believe it does, because Greg's been showcasing this for the past three years, hoping that we would bite. I believe that it has kind of drop-in report mechanisms so that we can create our own reports, so that it's meaningful what we get out of it, rather than already preordained reports that are part of the software. That way, we don't have to pay OpenGov for any new type of report that maybe the board is asking for or that you feel you need to review yourself. So I'm getting a yes. So that's what I thought.
We're a full report creator. You can query just about anything you have in the database. And then also, we'll be very involved in the workflow development, and we're going to be doing that with an eye on reporting so that we can pull out at a touch of a button pretty much all the things that we'll want to see in-house that you guys would want to access. And then in addition to that, we'll be able to query pretty much all data that's housed in there.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, it's just, I know it's nuanced, but I just want to clarify. I hear that our modules have built-in functionality that a client, basically a registrant who is an applicant, will be able to log in and track some workflows. But our questions about, you know, broader community transparency, maybe that functionality is not appropriate because they're not technically an applicant. So within the existing modules, you know, is there transparency features that would allow a view to be embedded on a website that could present aggregated data, like here's active permit applications within a given supervisory district or a given ZIP code? And will have some level of functionality for inquiry, not for a project applicant, just for a member of the general public? And that would require a user registration as well?
I'm going to hand that question over to OpenGov team.
Yeah, I'll let Brant take it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. So we absolutely can enable that without registration. So residents, members of the public can come online and search by location to see specific permits by location or lack of permits, as sometimes is the case as well. And then also build out reports and have those reports available to the public based on permits by district, permits by type, various, you know, open permits versus closed permits. So yes, absolutely. And then as part of our training and our product is that, you know, as those different inquiries come up, staff's going to be equipped and enabled to create additional types of reports and permit, on permit data and license data as they see fit and as you request.
So all those things are baked into the existing modules presented today for approval? I'm not asking for the moon or some add-on module down the road, right?
You are not asking for the moon at all. That's part of the package that we will deliver.
Okay, thank you.
Final comment. Glad that this is here today, too. The two things, obviously, which, you know, we heard about this on the Economic Development Committee we had formed a few years back. We've had many different conversations and been able to see the program. The most encouraging thing, I think, just as you said, Bruno, we've got to start over. This is probably not the best way to do it, but the most encouraging things that, you know, I want to talk about is the software's been vetted by the Technical Governments Committee. I remember coming on as an early supervisor in those conversations, as we had things that were purchased without talking to the IT department or the technical governments or, right, what did I say? Governance Committee, all those things need to be vetted before we go on and purchase these systems. So everybody knows it can, has a chance to talk to everybody. I know we're not going to get everything that's promised, but as long as it's a system that functions and we can make it work well for the entire county, I think it's important. I did like the public-facing features that were opportunities there, not just for your department, but all departments throughout the county. So glad that it's here today. And like I said, the most encouraging thing is we're not just out buying computer stuff for each department in different ways where they don't talk to each other. Hopefully, this is going to be something that integrates the entire county and really makes the end user, our constituents, an easier way to do things as they're coming here. How to get to yes, we're always looking for that, and let's hope this is that step towards that. So that's my comment. I support the project, so good job.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room? Any hands up? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I will go ahead and motion, where is it at? Sorry. To waive the competitive bidding process for data management software pursuant to Lake County Code, Chapter 2, Section 38.4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Madam Chair, I am motion to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and OpenGov for electronic permitting software and services through FY 2026 and 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Oh, you can hear CDD stuff.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.